I'll call our meeting to order and ask Captain Woods to give our invitation.
Oh, heaven, Father Lord, we thank you once again for the fact that we're allowing you to gather. Father, we ask that you between your Lord bless us, our families, our friends, all near and far away. You came Lord to protect us from sin and sin. And Father, in your continuedness, you Lord give the vision and understanding that you may just move into our good judgment. These are all designated in the Son of Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, thank everybody for coming. We have a full house here tonight, which is always good. And I want to particularly recognize, uh, there's some Boy Scouts out there. I know Dan McNeil's in charge of them as well. 625 is it?
They're working on journalism there.
Okay. Okay. We may not be as exciting as some in the community, but, um... I mean, they're welcome to come in closer if they so dare. Alright, we do have, you know, Linda's face and the challenge, but, uh, we appreciate everyone being here again. Oh, they're gonna come up. Okay. Y'all welcome to come closer if you want to. We won't bite you as far as you know. This is not the school board meeting. We might need some first aid or... Yeah, y'all, y'all are in here. You can play face. Yeah, the rest of us couldn't get back up. Okay. Good deal. Glad you guys could be with us tonight. Alrighty, uh, first up is approval of agenda items, and we did want to add one thing, uh, or ask you to add one thing, which is a proclamation for the PD Coalition. And I don't know if there's a copy of it in your package, and I'll read it when we get to it. And we can add it as new business F if y'all are okay with that. We got a motion, so moved by Dr. Prince. Thank you by Mr. Woods. All in favor, raise your eye here. It's unanimous. I think that has proven the rest of the agenda as well. Alright, we have a couple of presentations, and the first one is Ms. Judy McQueen. Ms. Judy, come up here. I'll come over there. Ms. Judy McQueen is retired from the county after ten years, I think. She has a very important job with the county that we all expect. She'd like you to get a paycheck. It would always want to be nice to, uh, people get a paycheck. We got your little gift, and I want to thank you for your year of service and wish you well in your own retirement. Yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, then while I'm up here, we have a certificate of appreciation for, uh, our crew at the voter registration office. And I'll read it. I don't have my glasses, so we'll read what I think it said. Anthony, come up here. It says that the Marlborough County Council hereby presents a certificate of appreciation to Lori Moses, Christina Thompson, and Phyllis Hagan, and you two. Of Marlborough County Elections and Registration Office for their contributions to the South Carolina Association of Registration and Elections. I guess that's this, y'all's state association, which is called SCARE. Uh, whereas Lori Moses, Christina Thompson, and Phyllis Hagan of the Marlborough County Registration and Elections Commission of the Board have served the South Carolina Association of Registration and Elections in several different capacities that benefit the citizens throughout South Carolina. And whereas Ms. Moses served as Secretary at SCARE for a two-year term, and her duties in this position included taking minutes for every section of each conference, ensuring that the minutes were approved and included in the history book, the association's history book, notifying all appropriate parties of committee meeting dates and various section dates, and attending the annual SCARE conferences. And whereas Ms. Moses has also served for approximately six years and continues to serve on the conference committee for 2015 to 2017, along with Ms. Thompson and Ms. Hagan, responsibilities of members of the conference committee include compiling the package for the annual conference, soliciting and collecting door prizes, organizing the agenda for various conferences. Mrs. Moses also serves on the SCARE Resolution and Bylaws Committee, and you're busy, for 2015, '17, and her duties on this committee will include initiating, reviewing, and recommending resolutions and changes or amendments to the association's bylaws. And whereas Ms. Christina Thompson has served as the Director for the newly formed District Seven of SCARE for Congressman Tom Wright for the past two years, her duties in this position include including serving on Executive Board and casting votes and representing the candidate in this district. Now therefore, Marlborough County Council would like to express your appreciation to you all for your dedicated service to the South Carolina Association of Registration and Elections, as well as for your devoted services to Marlborough County. These individuals have spent numerous hours volunteering their time and energy to programs that benefit and serve all citizens of Marlborough County and South Carolina. The citizens of Marlborough County are very fortunate to have these individuals represent Marlborough County Registration and Election Office, and Marlborough County Council appreciates their efforts and all they do for our citizens. And these guys have a tough job. If you've ever been involved in elections, you've been in a stool and a whip, and everybody gets up there, and you guys keep the peace and keep the details where they need to be, and I know we all appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. Moving right along, uh, we now have four sets of minutes to approve. I guess I'll ask if anyone has any issues with anything, and can we approve them in one fell swoop?
There were several of us absent for the March ninth, so we'll be abstaining. I can believe that.
Okay. Any other corrections or additions? So the motion is to approve, um, the sets of minutes for all four of these meetings. With those that didn't attend will be abstained, so if there are no other corrections, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Dr. Prince. Mr. Allen. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. We have no old business at this time. We move right to the new business. And the first item is, uh, something we do every time, every year about this time. It's Ordinance 735, which is an ordinance to adopt the annual budget and to make appropriations for Marlborough County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016. This is our first reading by title only. Mr. Haynes, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, uh, as it has been stated, this is something we do every year, but hopefully it's not taken lightly in any in any fashion. We've met with all the departments, uh, although a few of the administrative departments that I still have to meet with, but generally, we've met with all the departments. And I will have to say that departments were pretty careful this year. There's no unreasonable request. Very little in the way of new throw-ins that you usually see or sometimes see in budgets. So I think the department has understood the situation that we're in with the state of Oklahoma, with the legislature, and with our customers. So, uh, that doesn't mean it'll be easy to put together, because it's still fluid on the revenue side. We don't know where that's going to go until we get some final answers out of Columbia. But, uh, the budget, you will have numbers in front of you by the next meeting. In fact, you probably should schedule a public hearing for the May meeting, and then we can have a second reading then, and then a third reading to see if we can have the budget displaced by the time it needs to be.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Haynes?
We have a workshop to... If necessary.
I had to ask if, uh, and I asked you guys if it would be possible to have that on the 4th of May, which is a Monday, and have it all in one, have a workshop, have an opportunity for people to come to us with their request, and then have the first reading. Has anyone had any conflict or...
On Monday?
Monday. If that'd be okay. We moved it up to date on the Monday. If there's a problem, that's fine. Okay. No, we'll stay away from school board meetings. So if we can tentatively set that, and if anybody has an issue, just let it lay by that. Okay, we need a motion for a first reading of 735.
So...
Dr. Prince makes the motion. Just go ahead in the seconds. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Moving along with the next item, Ordinance 736. An ordinance to approve the capital improvement plan for Marlborough County for the same period, fiscal period, fiscal year 2016 to 2020. And again, this is a first reading by title only. Mr. Haynes?
Mr. Chairman, this just sets up here what now or what has been historically an unfunded capital plan, but the same rules apply. We'll have number two by the next meeting. It's about time you had your work done.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve 735? Mr. Steen, second. Mr. Atwood. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Next up is Ordinance 737. An ordinance authorizing Marlborough County to continue in agreement with Marlborough County Rescue Squad, providing paramedic-level emergency service and transfer service throughout Marlborough County. This also is a first reading by title only. Mr. Haynes?
First reading by title. It looks like we're going to be able to keep everything doing the same. This affects the budget, so it's all working to the same end in June, uh, 1st of July, but, uh, we'll have a draft proposal in front of you by yourself, please.
Okay. Any questions? Motion by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Steen. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Next is approval of Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, Wildlife Services Agreement for Bieber Control. Mr. Haynes?
Mr. Chairman, this is an annual contract that we have with Wildlife Services to assist our public works in the demolition, generally the demolition and control of vermin or wildlife that might affect our flood. They're aware that they built a dam in the wrong place. So it, uh, it obligates the proper people to take care of the problems and hopefully to avoid a penalty problem.
Anybody have any questions? Is the motion we approved, uh, what staff has recommended?
For me.
Dr. Prince. Second by Mr. Blackman. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Uh, next up, we have approval of Control Management Incorporated, a government preventative maintenance for the library. Mr. Haynes?
Mr. Chairman, in front of you is a, uh, an agreement, an annual agreement between Control Management Incorporated and the county for the, uh, for the service of the air conditioning heating and heating equipment at the library. There is a slight increase this year of $204. It seems to be, uh, well worth, well worth the effort, because we do have a fair sophisticated system there, and, uh, as we're finding out in some of our buildings where we haven't had the best maintenance over the years, this will hopefully pay for itself in the long run just by, just by doing the proper maintenance. That should be good and all.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Haynes? So we hear a motion, we approve his recommendation.
So...
Mr. Woods. Second.
Second.
By Mr. Steen. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. And the last item under new business is the proclamation for PD Coalition. I'm gonna try to put my hands on here. Can I get a copy of you? I've got it here. This is a proclamation, uh, that the county council has been asked to approve for claiming April as Marlborough County Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas Sexual Assault and Child Abuse affects adults and children in Marlborough County not only as survivors, but also as family members, loved ones, friends, neighbors, or coworkers of survivors. And whereas Sexual Assault and Child Abuse are two of the most devastating crimes in our society today, with survivors often suffering lifelong pain from physical injury and serious emotional trauma. And whereas volunteers and service providers in our communities are dedicated to providing care to Sexual Assault and Child Abuse survivors through 24-hour hotlines, counseling, support groups, advocacy, medical care, education, and... Whereas the 2015 Observance of Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month calls attention to sexual and family violence and educates the public and individuals on how to prevent, treat, and heal from this most personal violation. Now therefore, Marlborough County Council does hereby proclaim April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout the community, and encourages all citizens to work together to prevent Sexual Assault and Child Abuse, support survivors, and strive to ensure a life free from fear of harm from all residents and visitors. But be it further resolved that Marlborough County schools, student parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations are encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adolescents. I'll ask if, uh, ask for a motion to approve the proclamation. Mr. Blackman, seconded by, um, Dr. Prince. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. I see Ms. Hamilton here. We appreciate the work you all are doing, and, uh, we'll get you a copy of this. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the next section, Opening and Acceptance of Bids. The first item we have is Construction of Improvements to Water Distribution System, Water Line Extension Near Tomahawk Break Plan. Mr. Haynes?
Mr. Chairman, this is actually, uh, with grant money, the community development money passed through the county to, uh, Wallace Water for fire improvements, Tomahawk Break. The bids, as you can see, range from a low bid of Site Concepts Incorporated, $50,395, to the Four S Construction Incorporated, $8,175. For the record, the others are 520 LLC, $61,425, Frank Horn Construction, $64,804, $50,000, Corbin and Sun, $67,129, Digging Deep Construction LLC, $69,440, and Conder Construction Company, $74,675. Obviously, uh, we're recommending the Site Concepts at a low bid of $50,395 to award the contract to, uh, and provide water service to the county.
Any questions?
Without a make a motion, we accept the staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Steen.
I have a motion.
Mr. Allen. Got you. Um, any other discussion? Did you may have mentioned where it can, how we're paying for it?
Uh, Community Development.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. This has been something we've worked on for a while for this year. Next is Construction of New Water System Additions to Serve in Maple Street Property. Mr. Haynes?
Mr. Chairman, basically, we're, this finishes the, uh, the plan for plant major improvements around Maple Street property. This provides, or the award of this bid would provide the water service necessary to, uh, put the fire line in, they call it. Uh, this is the fire supply water that would go around the perimeter of the building. It's actually, uh, designed in stages, and we'll run it, we'll probably run it over a couple of budget years to, uh, to make it fit the budget and the money that we have available. But, but after this, we'll be able to, uh, do the plantings at the entrances and dress up the entrance to the properties and, and make the building available for those for either warehousing or whatever other kinds of businesses that would need this kind of service or need to have a fire protection from their insurance, that would normally require this. The bids came in, and we had, uh, good interest in the project, as you can see, from Frank Horn Construction Incorporated at $157,714 through Four S Construction at $327,447. You're running into, uh, you're running into major pieces of equipment when you start tying into the water line with a big water heater and a big control vault. And so that's the reason you see the pricing as to what line itself is, is, uh, I think it's a six-inch line, if I recall. So, uh, the other bid for Conder Construction, for the gain of the record, Conder Construction at $161,160, 520 LLC at $163,748, Digging Deep Construction at $190,000, RWF Construction LLC at $273,144, and Four S Construction at $327,447. Uh, obviously recommending the low bid for Frank Horn Construction, which we feel is a qualified bidder, at $157,714.
Any questions? And again, just for the record, this is grant money that's paying for this?
There's some, uh, a little bit here. Well, pardon, I guess, right.
Any other questions? If not, a motion, we approve the recommendation from staff.
So...
Dr. Prince. Is there a second? Mr. Glad. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, thank you all. Next, we move into appointments to Boards and Commissions. The first one we have, um, the recommendation from the Workforce Development Board to appoint Ms. Rena McLean or Ms. Rena Parker to, uh, the Workforce Development Board representing private sector with their term to expire on June 30th, 2017. Mr. Haynes, am I right that this is something they, the board asked us?
This is their recommendation to work with them.
That's typically how they've done it. Do you want to have any questions or the motion, we approve their request?
So...
Mr. Steen is her second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woods. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Next up, we have consideration of, another position on this same board, consideration of appointment of Mr. James Roberts, uh, to represent the United Way of Marlborough County, and his term would expire on June 30th, 2016. Um, is there a motion, we approve that recommendation?
So...
Mr. Woods, her second. Mr. Blackman. Other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. I wanted to follow up with the, uh, our discussion of the Recreation Ad-Hoc Committee to look at some plans we discussed in a work session a while back. And I have some names here. I'm not asking, it's an ad hoc committee, so I can point at a chairman, but I want to make sure everyone was aware of who was asked to be on this. Um, the intent would be to look through what we talked about and, um, and just kind of vet it and hear the financial end of it, and come back with something that the full council can work on and, um, and take further if we want to. And the initial plan, what I had, what I had thought would work, uh, for the initial look at it would be the rural council members we have here, because past plans that have been presented to us or have come out of other groups always, um, did or were perceived to threaten our community programs we have that a lot of people worked very hard for. So we want to make sure that you rural, people representing rural communities like McCollin, Clyl, and Wallace Blom and Brightfield have a voice there. So from the council, it would be, uh, Mr. Steen, Mr. Glad, Mr. Allen, Mr. Blackman, and Mr. Woods. From the community, I'd like to ask Ms. Dex Bostick, who's coming off as mayor, uh, Mr. Tyrone Abraham, who's on our Recreation Commission, but this is just a, you know, a short-term thing, uh, Mr. Jermaine Purvis and Mr. Dan McNeil to serve on that and set a meeting hopefully for April 27th, which is a Monday, where we can show them the same things we looked at in our work session and that we felt pretty positive about, and that we showed the city council, and they felt very positive. And I'd ask staff to try to line that up and be prepared to have the maps that I know you're working on, and we can present an overview of the plan, and then also the, uh, the financial elements. It would require some additional funding from somewhere other than property taxes, and the thought being, uh, considered as a penny sales tax, which we found out we can do, and would create significant revenue that could, um, pay for our new facilities and even more, uh, operating expenses. So I wanted to make that official and go ahead and have a move to do that. Um, of course, the council members, myself and Dr. Prince and Mr. Plato that aren't on here, you know, it's an open meeting. There's a majority of council there, so it is a public meeting. Just want to have a private flair to it a little bit, just to build support. That's what we want to do. So I want to make you aware of that. Any other appointments to Boards and Commissions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our reports. And the first report we have is from Ms. Angeline Law, Finance Director Department.
Mr. Chair, members of council, for the month of March, it's been a trip for a 50% of the budget now and the debt that we've raised for this going in the years. Our revenues for this month increased 5% for February, and that brings our revenues to about 10% of the budget now. We've been on including the fiscal year, 16 budget figures. We'll continue to work towards constructing a conservative budget, essentially advised of continuing shortfall in the government fund. And as Mr. Haynes said, we have looked into the department heads and are in process of compiling a draft. Uh, we will continue to work to analyze spending and establish the most efficient use of the counties and the different ones. And also, kind of, at the end, the department heads are very much aware of the decrease in the local government fund and have worked to fund it their department's ability. I still monitor legislation on local government funding, but there is not been any change since the House passed H2374 in March. Any questions?
Any other questions? I have to pay your report. Next up is a new recording report. Mr. Haynes?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm trying not to be a long story for me. Um, we, as we always do at this time, we recognize employees of five of the rear to serve in Marlborough County, again, through the month of March. Luther Brown, 13 years. Kathy Pearson, 26 years. Andrew Calder, 39 years. And we claim him as an employee. Harry Easrick Jr., at six years. So he just made the cutoff. Yeah, look at his age. Again, we've met with all the departments, uh, and we'll have your numbers at the beginning. Number two at the meeting next month. The kickoff for the GAF project, we, we keep talking about it. You only approved it, uh, something like a month ago. So we plan to have something ready in about six weeks, which we have picked out, uh, or we will be picking out an area of about 1,500 to 2,000 parcels, where we'll be able to test the system. We'll be able to go in, check them out, uh, pull up what we have available, pull up tax records and that type of thing on, in, on pieces of property as a test before we put out the whole system together, which will take a little longer, but again, we want to make sure that we're on the right track before we get too far out. Uh, there is a, uh, the NACO Restriction Drug Program that we approved back in the winter. Uh, it is being used. I was surprised the numbers were actually a little lower than I thought they would be, because we did have some initial interest in people picking up the drug card, but there has been a savings of, uh, in Marlborough County by Marlborough County Police of $214.31. That's a saving. So we've, uh, we've meant a little bit to some folks. Uh, there were 17 parts that have been issued to date. I've notified the council of this, but I thought it was worth talking about. We had a fellow who worked in the probation and parole office who suffered a heart attack on the ground at the courthouse last week. We pulled a thing in, but anyway, it was a crack. I think it was up there. The, uh, we had a response from Larry Meggs, uh, who was a security officer working that day, and Judge Mark Heath, and, and we actually had, in Judge Heath's office, the, uh, the external defibrillator, AED, as it's called in emergency circles. And they were able to actually apply shock to the probation parole police's heart through skin. And, uh, they've been credited with saving his life. So in talking with the Grover, in fact, Grover came up with the idea later, Grover, uh, Grover Queen and others, and then they ran by knee and out of food, is, uh, we might all have a little of this stuff. We were lucky that, uh, Judge Heath is, was in place, that would be there that day, and... We were lucky that Judge Heath was in place, had to be there that day and was trained in the operations. There's probably other people trained, but I'm not sure that I know who they are. And we knew where the device was, since it was in his office, but what we thought we'd try to do is to get some of the devices, through three of the devices, put them in some of the offices where we have a lot of interaction with the public and a lot of people in and out, including things like we put some in the recreational vehicles, we put more in the border house, possibly in the tax office, because there's a chance of folks getting excited and they go to the tax office. Maybe I think we'll hang it on the wall in my office or your office, or at least in the office, you usually handle those for that. But, and we want to thank the people to be able to use the equipment. And we've been warned, we've seen what may happen, we've had good results from what we had in place, but we think we ought to follow up and go and do a little more. So, we're working on setting that up. We've been notified by Marlborough Electric that the light at Blue Landing won't be replaced, so if you get a complaint or hear about that, it's their light, they're not going to replace it, because I think it seems to be a target and it gets taken out of service pretty much as soon as it gets in service with a bullet usually. We've seen some updates in Association of Counties regarding proposals to amend Regulation 61116, it's the trauma care systems. If you want to see the rules, there's a place on here to go and look at the rules. If you want to make comments, there's a place you can, you can make a response, but I felt like we should notify you that these kinds of things are taking place and could affect things going on in the county. We received a notification from McNair Law Firm that we're seeing a transfer of franchise authority from Metrocas to San Gil Contex. And basically, what that means is somebody bought Metrocas or they're using it in some form or fashion. The planning commission met last night, and we meet generally quarterly or more often if needed, and we've had some trouble in the past getting a forum, we did not have a forum, we did have a forum last night, in the previous meeting we did not. But we do, we are behind in some of the training that the planning board members do have to take, and it's cumulative. If you didn't take last year's training in four hours, this year you need eight hours of training. Or it's three hours each year, but the idea is that you don't get away, you can't make it up by taking just a bit of your training, you got to take last year's training as well, and if you miss more than that, then it becomes a bigger issue. But we set up a way to take the training through webcast, we'll set it up in this room so that folks can come in. Now, they got to be willing to give up the time, but it's going to be available via webcast, so if you're going to travel and call, now, in the past, we've had to go to either Florence or Hartsfield, I think is in one case, or maybe even all the way to Columbia in the past. So, it'll be here to get the training if you're willing to give up the time. The Second Annual Sprint Event for the Industrial Council is scheduled for Thursday, April 16th, at 5:00 PM, Dan will be serving at 6:00. You all know, it's been announced that Congressman Rice will be the guest speaker, and we're, in case he's late, we have a show by his administrative assistant, I think, who plans to tell jokes until he gets there. The 64th Annual National Day of Prayer is held on Thursday, May 7th, 2015, on the Marlborough County Courthouse lawn, at the time of reflection. You all should remember to participate wherever we are at 6:00 PM on May 7th. NACO National Association of Counties Annual Meeting is scheduled for July 10th and 13th in Charlotte Convention Center. So, if you've ever wondered what goes on in one of those meetings, and would like to just see a meeting, it's fairly inexpensive, very little travel to get to Charlotte, it'd be a good chance to attend. If you'd like to attend, let Patricia know, we'll set you up with the registration, the proper rooms and tickets that you would need to participate in the event. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you.
And moving right along, we have a request of citizens, recognition of citizens' requests to be a part of council. The first item we have is Ms. Ellen Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got a couple of people with me here tonight, Janice Roger, our president of our Marlborough County街道 Board, and want to introduce Shonda Collins, who's our new coordinator of the year. Shonda comes to us from Enson County, North Carolina, she's Director of Criminal Justice, and the Sheriff's Department there, and she's helping victims out, so we're delighted to have her. And Sharon Woodham, who does child abuse prevention in our elementary schools and also helps with training adults on how to prevent sexual abuse of children. And I wanted to bring them and let them tell you very briefly what they've got going on in the county for April.
And this, yeah, the board member, Ms. Dixon?
Dixon, yes.
Oh, Brenda Dixon, Brenda Dixon, another board member, didn't know she even existed.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
This is my first meeting and I'd like to be here to announce the special days that we're doing for Child Abuse Prevention Month and also Sexual Abuse. We are going to be in Johnson and Marburg Electric Hall on April the 18th, which is next Saturday, and we will have a booth set up for all of you to come out and really, you know, help us support what's going on here in this county. Well, for people to support, I'm sorry. And also, on April the 25th, we will have an event for the kids to play, that is what kids are here for. They're here to play, happy, they'll be kids. So, for the Child Abuse Prevention Month, we are going at Funland Park, we have some flowers up here on the table, so when you go out, if you pick up one, we also have some P D for additional information as well. That will be on the 25th, January 1st at Funland Park. Thank you.
Thank you. And the board?
Hi, Sharon Woodham, and I'll be brief this way, you know about the presentation, it's two hours long, it's five, five steps that we are used to protect you. This is for the children's program that we're trying to bring to this county, a lot of people don't know about it, and hopefully you all will help me to be the person that possesses this in schools, to staff, any adult that will help our children say. The first step is that we need to learn facts. Second step is we need to minimize opportunity, that means eliminate risk, eliminate or reduce isolation, one-on-one situations, to just to increase risk for abuse. The third step, first step is we need to talk about it, because in a lot of areas, it's harsh, harsh, so we need to talk about it. The fourth step is we need to recognize the signs. Fifth step is to react responsibly. And then, and step five, react responsibly. Thank you.
Again, appreciate the work you guys have done. Next, Mr. Ronald Smith.
Good evening, Chairman, this is not what I'm doing, but I just want to bring up another issue about the drainage situation out in Marlborough. We have a cop from Brooklyn Avenue, and we're speaking here in Brooklyn, on, I think they were saying a time before, they did try to get a plant, but they couldn't, they couldn't, y'all, y'all were out there evaluating the situation, it ain't gotten anything better. It's been seven years, we had, we had, you know, people were stagnant and all. So, I was speaking with my cop from, about that, I don't know if anybody was, you know, about that. They had installed on the brick road, a tile, okay, a senior used to ride through there, I mean, Ricky taking this place when the rains, they ride through there, but you know, tile, it's not yet, it's not yet that's sold, it's, you know, it's not properly installed, you know? And I was just wanting to, I said, I talked to my cop, I said, well, look, I don't want to be like a wise guy or whatever, and go, you know, I take pride in my house and my neighbor. And he said, he kind of said, it'd be good if you would bring some people up there with you, but my neighbors, most of them, they would accept shit. Another neighbor, he just, he just ate with two legs amputated, but it seemed like, oh, my own one comes up here, but it's, it's an issue, it's an issue, I was like, you know, see what they did by, see, it's the cell here, okay, we talked about it. You could hold bank and did it, and it could be did, appreciate it. Like I said, you know, it's, you know, anyways, it's the same thing, same problem that we did, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we have a number of citizens' requests, so next up is a recognition council member, Mr. Wood.
What do you have, all right?
Wood. Okay, Mr. Steen.
Just, I was going to ask, Bush Davis is at the area, and he was reporting about delegation to the registration and legislation, so was I welcome?
Mr. Glad, speak in both hands.
Yeah, okay, first, here again, I think, Mr. Smith, come up here. I've met with people in Marlborough quite a few times, which I know, and I know this program's been going on for six, seven years. I've met with administrators quite a few times, here called state a couple of times, and trying to get the state to come in, because a lot of the problems on state, and the state cut our budget over and over. I agree, in part, something needed to be done in Marlborough, because everybody down these taxpayers, and somehow, we got to work something out. And what we going to do, like, put the ditches down there, with the summer coming in, with all the mosquitoes and the snakes and everything, and this is the problem that we discuss in Marlborough all the time. I'm going to continue working on it, I know our administrators will continue working on it, we're just trying to get some help in the right places, and, you know, this is something that's not going to go away, going to keep working on it, and I appreciate what you're doing. The board's registration office. I had a pledge of going to the convention, and when I looked at they came up on stage, or who was the secretary for the year, and what each person done, and just to see Marlborough County being recognized by the state of South Carolina, they got more recognition than anybody who was the state, of all other counties, I'm like, wow, this is great, you know? Nobody has any idea of what kind of work they put in to what they're doing. And the only way you really get to know is not just at election time, right, but by going to the conventions and seeing what they actually deal with, make it a lot, right? To learn equipment that they need, that they don't have, there's a lot of new equipment that they come out with every year, there's all kinds of new stuff that they have to have to be able to run the next election. So, it's things like that, you need to get it reporting on and really, really look at. It's not just the few people that was up, that took the pictures, because you've got other people back there that's on that board like Miss Dixon, sitting back there in the back, can't, nobody see, right? There's different people out there, so it's a whole election that was there. It was just a beautiful affair to be able to see Marlborough County be recognized like that. And this is the first year that we also have our own House Representative, and I'm going to give props when I need it. Patricia Hennington was there as a board member on the panel up there, and she recognized them, and so it just feels good to see where Marlborough County is going towards our election board. I'm just, anything that I can do or we can do to help y'all get what you need, just just really let us know. And our ministry will always work with y'all, anybody, which is excellent, you know? So, just thank you for the job that y'all do.
Is it that?
I too would like to recognize the election commission. I tell you, anybody that ever had the opportunity to go by there and see what that place is like on the election, it's like Grand Central Station, I just don't know how to do it. My patients wouldn't take that job, and I'd like to recognize them for it, just say, they don't like enough money. Thank you.
I'm just taking a bit of a sip. Dr. Princk?
I'd like to make a comment about the Knollwood Acres situation. Part of the problem is, of course, the drainage, but a lot of that is part of property. So, I don't know who farms that area, so any further talks? It may help to sit down and talk with that person and see if the farming practices, you know, could be changed so that it's less runoff or whatever, I don't know. But I'm talking to the representative at Cal, it's part of property, so state, we've done that a lot of state handling. So, but we're not going to give up, we're just going to keep finding a way to resolution. So, I think it's time to get the man on and involve in the conversation. And I'd just like to say, it's good to see the young people here, doing, taking notes or whatever, so that you can see what goes on in the county, and it's good to see you here. I wasn't going to say stand up and say their names, I know they're too bashful to do that, but it's good to see you. And that's it, thank you.
Okay. Got a couple of quick things. The last election we had, primary, we were up there, some of us were up there and talking about getting a T V or something they could display the results on, and if there's any way we could find that in their budget, it would probably keep the peace a little bit. And we got to figure out how to make it display, but one year, we had a spreadsheet that made it do it, and everybody wasn't hovering around, you know, especially when you got a highly contested election, like, I think you got a McCall election coming up, it's nice for people to be able to see it. You know, something like that up there. And then the other thing is, you know, with the Garden Recreation, everybody has children or grandchildren playing ball, and so I imagine the administrator and the staff try to get calls about every little thing we see when we go out on the fields, but I did just want to stress the fact that we need to make sure we're maintaining basic stuff, and one of those things are scoreboards. I was at a ballgame last night and had to stop the game to figure out who was leading and who was, what score was, nobody, there's no way of knowing. And I know we did some work to fix them, but they're not being operated, and, you know, maybe we, something you guys, you might get off somebody 20 bucks to run the score run for the night or something, but it would be a big step up, in fact, I think it's just a basic something you got to have. And then the other thing is, I was at the same game last night, and some of the safety equipment had been displaced, the pop-up thing, net over the pop-up, and they were popping up and hitting the line at concession stands, so it was, you know, just little things we need to make sure we pay attention to, and there were some staff people there, and, you know, they just, that's important too. So, I usually don't bring things like that up in a council meeting, but I think it's important that we do that. And again, I want to thank the Boy Scouts for being here, hopefully showed y'all how adults can act fairly decent. And you need to take them to another meeting in our community so they can see the contrast. If there are no other items, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Mr. Glad, seconded by Mr. Allen, all in favor, raise your right hand. That's you now. Thank you again.